I'll ask all town meeting members to please assemble in their precincts. All town meeting members, please assemble in their precincts and have the monitors please take attendance.
Precinct one reports 22 present, 7 absent. Precinct two. Precinct two reports 13 present, 16 absent. Precinct three. 18 present, 11 absent in precinct three. Precinct four. 14 present, 15 absent in precinct four. Precinct five. Precinct five reports 16 present, 12 absent. Precinct six. Precinct six reports 17 present, 10 absent. Precinct seven. Precinct seven reports 18 present, 12 absent. Precinct eight. Precinct eight reports 13 present, 13 absent. At large? At large 15 present, 9 absent. Yes. 14 present in precinct two. Precinct six reports 17 present, 10 absent. Precinct seven. Precinct seven reports 18 present, 12 absent. Precinct eight. Precinct eight reports 13 present, 13 absent. At large? At large 15 present, 9 absent. Yes. 14 present in precinct two. 14 present in precinct two. 147 members being present, we have a quorum. The monitors please bring forward their attendance sheets. The clerk will now read the warrant.
Good evening, everyone. Special Town Meeting, October 24th, 2016, Milford, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either Constable of the Town of Milford and said county greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth aforesaid you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Milford qualified by law to vote in Town Affairs to meet in the Upper Hall of the Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, on the 24th day of October, 2016 A.D., at 7:30 P.M. and then and there to act upon the following articles. Article one.
Motion's been made to waive the reading of the articles. Any voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to waive the reading of the articles. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's carried. The clerk will now read the officer's return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Mass. Date, September 26th, 2016. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified the inhabitants of the Town of Milford to meet at the time and place for the purpose within mentioned by posting attested copies of this warrant in 10 or more public places in Milford. Thomas O'Laughlin, Police Chief.
Okay. We have the Board of Selectmen appointed a Finance Director, Mr. Taylor, and he is not a registered voter in the Town of Milford, therefore would need the consent of the Board to sit in the Members-at-Large. He will not be voting on any of the articles being presented, but is there so that there can be quick reference to him for any questions that may arise. Does any voter object? Hearing no objections, he's allowed to sit in the Members-at-Large. The first, I'd like to recognize Mr. DeLuzio for the purposes of presenting a report to the Town Meeting.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. Mr. Moderator, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to brief the Members on a Town Meeting Reform Initiative that is currently underway. First, let me give you some background as to why and how this initiative got started. I've been a Town Meeting Member for over 40 years, and I have been and continue to be a strong advocate of Milford's representative Town Meeting form of government. It is one event held twice a year where many of the major issues facing the Town are presented for our consideration and where the average citizen has the opportunity to be heard. However, as evidenced by lower-than-desired attendance, fewer candidates running for Town Meeting seats, and Members anecdotal comments, I came to the realization that perhaps an initiative should be undertaken to make the Town Meeting a more pleasant and informative experience and bring it into the 21st century to assure it continues to be a viable governing body for us and for future generations. It has been said that democracy is not a spectator sport. There is no better forum to participate than our Town Meeting. In addition, it should be noted that the Town Meeting is a duly-elected legislative body of Town Government, directly accountable to the electorate, and as is the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, and other elected officials. As such, we should have a say in the manner and conduct of our meeting. Now realizing I was not in a position to coordinate such an initiative, I looked for other alternatives to approach such a project. In June of 2014, an opportunity presented itself when the Citizens for Milford held an open meeting to solicit ideas for them to pursue. Their mission statement, which in part states, "Coordinate projects and events that address current issues that seek to improve the quality of life in our community," it seemed to be a good fit. So I attended their meeting, presented the Town Meeting Reform Initiative idea, which they agreed to organize and manage. Now here's where we are. After some initial strategizing, the Citizens for Milford prepared a five-step methodology to address the initiative. In step one, the Citizens for Milford would establish a Town Meeting Reform Working Group of up to 15 members to be comprised of one Town Meeting Member from each precinct, one at-large member, up to three Selectmen designees, and up to three Citizens for Milford Members. Then, in step two, the working group would then develop a survey questionnaire to solicit your input. Step three, the survey results would be submitted to the Board of Selectmen for their comments. And step four, the working group would then prepare a report with implementation recommendations based on the survey results and circulated for public comment. And the final step, the working group would develop a comprehensive Town Meeting Handbook. This step-five methodology was presented to the Board of Selectmen in September of 2015. They unanimously supported the initiative and the five-step methodology. Although later than anticipated, the following 13-member Town Meeting Reform Working Group was established. The eight precincts are represented by precinct one, Dr. Richard Heller; precinct two, Jose Costa; precinct three, Tom Harmon; precinct four, Mike Bontempo; precinct five, George Marino; precinct six, Paul Melnati; precinct seven, myself; and precinct eight, Mike Visconti. At-large Members are represented by Town Moderator Michael Noffrey, and the Board of Selectmen is represented by Selectman William Buckley. The three Citizens for Milford Members are Peter Scandoni, who is serving as the working group's Chairman, Kim Smith, and Steve Tredle. Thus far, the working group has researched other towns who have taken on similar initiatives and it prepared survey questions. The survey covers a wide range of topics, including the adequacy of the meeting hall's audio, video, and lighting facilities, each Member's capabilities and their use of the Internet, the manner, extent, and timeliness of information and data provided to us, to name just a few. The working group, through Jose Costa, engaged the services of a survey consulting firm to translate the draft questions into a survey questionnaire format to assure the questions are unbiased and will provide objective responses. This service is being provided at no cost. The first draft of the survey questionnaire was delivered to the working group last Monday. Going forward, the working group will continue to refine the survey questionnaire with the goal to submit it to all precinct Members and Members-at-Large before the 2017 annual Town Meeting. In conclusion, let me say that our Town Meeting is too important to take for granted. As a general rule, no organization should go on for decades without periodic self-examination and continuous improvement. The working group's hope is that this initiative will result in a more pleasurable and informative Town Meeting experience, thereby improving attendance and incentivizing more of our citizens to seek this important office. One last note, you'll find a form on your seat requesting your contact information, and it would be appreciated if you would fill it out and hand it to your captain before you leave this evening. The Town Clerk will be the sole custodian of email addresses and phone numbers. Having the contact information will allow the working group through the Town Clerk's office to officially provide each of you with information and the survey questionnaire via email if you use it, or via U.S. mail if you don't use email. On behalf of the Town Meeting Working Group, I want to thank you for your attention and hopefully for your support of this initiative. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact any of the working group Members. Thank you very much.
Following up on that, as Reno pointed out, you have that. If you don't give it to your precinct captain, there's a box over here on the stage that after the meeting you can drop that off so that we can have the information. Now recognize Mr. Moore and the Chairman of the Finance Committee for the report of the Finance Committee.
Ladies and gentlemen, Chris Moore and I'm the Chairman of the Finance Committee. Reno talks about making Town Meeting more exciting, and then they put the Finance Report first. I don't know how that's going to go over, but... One of the things that he did talk about, and I think is very important, is about information being presented to you, the Town Meeting Members. I think it's extremely important that you guys get a good picture of where we stand financially, and so it helps you to better understand what we're voting on with the articles and where we stand financially on the whole, as well as in this particular Town Meeting. As you see here, and this is a slide that we've repeatedly put up at every Town Meeting about some of our budget management goals, I'm not going to read every one of them there, but as you see, we really want to maintain an operational budget control and control the tax rate. Some of the highlights of tonight's Town Meeting, I just want to go over some of the articles. Article two, through the Municipal Modernization Act that was just passed by Governor Baker. We are able to establish a new fund, which is an injured-on-duty special reserve fund. You're going to be asked tonight to vote on the creation of this fund, as well as the funding of this fund, for $250,000. Every year, we put into the budget money to fund claims on injured-on-duty. What we are asking for is to create a fund that will stay there constantly, and we will not have to continually be putting that in the budget each year. It will be a revenue fund. It's very similar to a revolving fund, in which any claims can be paid out of that fund, as well as any third-party reimbursement can be put directly into that fund, and it won't go directly to the general fund and then have to be put back in. So we found this to be a very advantageous thing. The next thing you're going to see is one of the largest purchases we do. We're purchasing a ladder truck. We hope to purchase a ladder truck. The current fire ladder truck is 20 years old. It has a lot of wear on it. At $1.1 million, obviously, that's a considerable amount of money. On a purchase like this, the increase on the fire trucks are about 7% per year in costs. So you're looking at a $77,000 increase every year that we wait on this. So with the $16,000 a year it's costing us in maintenance costs, plus the increases that you see every year, and more importantly, there's a 14-month build-out on a ladder truck. When you order this, it takes 14 months just to get it. So this is nearing the end of its life. We do not want to be caught in a position where something catastrophic happens to the fire truck, and once again, even if we decide to order it at that point in time, we're waiting 14 months for it beyond the increased costs. Also, Article 10, you're going to see that we're looking to replace some fire doors at Stacy. What these fire doors are, are when a fire alarm goes off at a school, it's those little magnets by the doors, those magnets all released so that the fire doors can close. It's an enormous safety benefit to a building, and right now, the doors are in horrible condition. There's 29 of them that need to be replaced. Their mechanisms need to be replaced, and they're looking for $200,000 to do that. Now Article 15, this can be a little bit confusing. We have about a $55 million liability in our pension fund. We are currently only one of seven... There are only seven towns in the entire state that are scheduled to pay this off by 2037. Obviously, this is something that we're never going to pay off. It's $55 million. We are going to be required to move that schedule up to 2036, or maybe 2035. And the best analogy that I tell to people is, you have a 30-year mortgage. If all of a sudden the bank came to you and said, "You now need to pay that mortgage in 28 years," you're going to see that your monthly payment is obviously going to go up. Some of us have a mortgage of $200,000, $300,000. When you talk about a mortgage of $55 million, moving that up two years can be a substantial amount of money, and that goes right into our operational budget, and that will affect, obviously, our yearly expenditures and what we have available. This $1 million will go directly into that fund as basically a catch-up, and it will help that if we do get moved up to 2036, is what we hope to, and hopefully not up to 2035, that these significant costs won't be seen because we will have made this million-dollar contribution. So I strongly encourage you to support that as well. Article 24, this is the end of a long process. We've been talking about the Woodland School for a long time. Tonight, we are going to look for the final funding to finish that project off. We are going to bond $28 million to fund this school. This million dollars is to finish up the final payment so that we can get to that $28 million figure for the bond. I do want to remind everyone that when we started talking about this plan, we talked about bonding $32 million. We have reduced this through the great work of the Woodland Building Committee and the financial team, have gotten that number down to only bonding 28 million. I know it says it's only 28 million, but compared to what we were looking at bonding, this is an amazing, amazing thing. And I suggest everyone on this Sunday at 1 o'clock, there's an opening up at the school, and I suggest all of you, it's the biggest expenditure this town has ever made, and it's a beautiful, beautiful school. I suggest all of you try to go up and see it, and see what your money paid for. Article 26, I don't know if all of you are aware, up at the Route 140 intersection with Route 16 up at Milford Hospital, we are on a tip program with the state to improve that intersection, to be making left-turn lanes. When we do a project like this, you need land. There'll be land taking there. You'll need to take some of the land at each of the corners in order to be able to achieve these left-turn lanes. When you do take land, obviously, you have to compensate the owners. We are hoping to put aside $200,000 to do that. Now, this land-taking is not going to be happening in the next year. It's probably going to be in year two or year three. Also, we don't know how much it's going to be. It may not be 200,000. It may be 500,000. It may be 50,000. We do not know at this time. We thought, because of our financial situation now, that putting some money away when you have the money now would be a smart thing so that later on, we don't get hit with a big number, and maybe we won't, but at least it's the prudent decision now. And if we don't use it, it's just going to drop back to the bottom line of the Town anyway, so... Next, you're going to see a rather large purchase of a highway truck. Mr. Cristofoli is looking to purchase a large truck. It's $190,000. Now, I put some pictures up here, and this is available on the Town website, as well as many of the articles that we're talking about today. I hope all of you, in the future, you'll look on the Town website, you'll see specifications. You'll see here up at the top is what the condition of the truck is. It's rusted. It's a mess. It transports salt and everything, and it is eating away at the truck. The bottom of the picture is the truck that he's proposing. Now, one of the best benefits of this truck is that the ability to haul salt. We pay about $50,000 to $70,000 per year to haul salt. This vehicle will be able to do that. So if you just look at us saving that money on a yearly basis, this truck could be paid off in four or five years. Okay? It's a very smart investment for this town, as well as this truck is available to haul things from the transfer station, other things for the highway. It's a very good purchase for this Town at this time. Also, the Fisk Mill Bridge you're going to see on here, we talked about this at the last Town Meeting when you allocated funds for the engineering report. The report has come back and given us better news than we thought. It looks like the replacement of the bridge is going to cost us about $600,000, not $1 million as we initially had thought. Now, you're going to see up here that we're only asking for $300,000, and the reason why is, we share this bridge with Upton. Okay? So obviously, we share all expenses with Upton. So $300,000 would be our portion of the bridge. Lastly, bond payoffs. The Finance Director and the Town Treasurer had a great idea. We owe bonds, and we owe money. Right now, we have money to spend. There are a couple bonds mounting about $710,000 at an interest rate about 5%. We're looking to pay off those bonds. By paying off those two bonds, we are going to save the Town about $160,000 in interest. That's significant savings, and this is something I hope we are going to keep doing in the future. Now, you're asking, "Why don't we pay off more?" There are only certain bonds that are payable at certain times. These two, with their percentage rates that they have and the ability to be paid off, are a very smart move for the Town of Milford, and I hope we have your support for that as well. As a FinCon, we have some recommendations at this Town Meeting. We are cosponsoring the article with the Selectmen, hoping for $2.4 million in taxpayer relief. As you'll see when we look at some of the numbers, we're in very good financial shape as a Town. We have very good free cash position. We have a very good excess levy capacity position. We believe that the taxpayers deserve their change. Okay? This $2.4 million will help to go toward the tax levy and reduce people's tax bills. The other thing we're looking for is a $1.5 million contribution to stabilization. As you know, we're always saving, and that's what put us in the great position that we're currently in. We're looking to put $500,000 into our long-term stabilization fund, and we're looking to put an extra million dollars into our short-term capital fund for future projects, and we have plenty of them coming, whether it's Godfrey Brook, whether it's other land takings, whether it's capital projects. So it's a very smart move to do this now. The other thing that we're recommending, and not a lot of towns can say this, we have a $1.1 million ladder truck. We're looking to pay for this out of free cash. We do not want to raise and appropriate this, which once again is just to show you what good financial position we're currently in. I know people can barely see this. I'm going to put this up on the Town website as well. It's just showing you where the spending is coming. We're going to spend quite a bit of free cash in this Town Meeting. We're going to be spending about $4.5 million in free cash at this Town Meeting, or we hope to, and the rest would be through raise and appropriate. Once again, this is the balance sheet. I'm sure most of you don't care about that, but that will be available for you to see on the Town website as well. So when you look at this Town Meeting, what exactly are we going to do if everything happens the way that everyone hopes it will happen? We're entering this meeting with about $5.9 million in excess levy capacity and $6.3 million in free cash. Those are very healthy numbers. Now, I know you may be curious, and a lot of people question me about the fact that we have $6.3 million in free cash. How did this happen? Because it is a very large number. It's a very complicated situation on how free cash is calculated, and to be honest with you, I'm Chairman of the Finance Committee, and sometimes I need it down on paper because I can't understand it. It is done through the... Both the spending of what we, in our Town, what was not spent, as well as the revenue that came in. Our revenue was higher than what we expected, both through state aid and through our local... The local, we could not even estimate some things, such as tax title, which is money that shows up that we can't even calculate or estimate. The real true free cash number, what I like to call the true free cash number, is about $2.5 million. We're over a $100 million corporation. We were off by $2.5 million on our budgeting. If any of your children or grandchildren came home and got a 98 on their science test, I think you'd be pretty happy with them, and that's where we stand right now. So with the articles that we're looking at tonight, like I said, we're spending about $5.1 million in excess levy capacity and about $4.5 million of free cash, with the end result going into the next Town Meeting of $3.2 million in excess levy capacity and $1.8 million in free cash. As I mentioned, that $1.8 million obviously is still a significant number, but there are projects that we need to tackle. There's snow and ice. God forbid, you know, that number's big. Let's hope not, but we have to address that at the next Town Meeting. I want to quickly, just to compliment the financial team, the Finance Director, the Members of my committee, some of the objectives that we had going into the last Town Meeting and just how they washed out. Taxpayer relief, we were hoping for $1.8 million. I'm hoping tonight we end up at $2.4 million. Capital projects, we wanted to spend $1.5 million on capital projects. We're going to be able to do that again this year. Debt service, we wanted to keep at $3.5 million. We are not going to do that. It's going to be at $5.7 million, and the reason for that is that $2.5 million is the Woodland project that came online. So actually, we're even below the debt service number that we hoped for. The budget increase, we were hoping for a 2.5% budget increase. We're looking at about 4.9%. Reason for that, a couple things came higher. The schools were a little bit higher. Workers' compensation was a little bit higher. Retirement was a little bit higher, things that we couldn't control. So this is the one aspect that we didn't, we weren't able to maintain, but at 4.9% still doable. And the last one, we were hoping to be able to contribute $500,000 to stabilization. I'm hoping by the end of the night, we've contributed $1.5 million. So when you're looking at all these things, once again, you see we're in a very healthy financial position, and the reason why is through smart budgeting and smart spending. And I can't stress that enough. People see that we have a great financial position. People think, "Wow, now we can go out and spend money." If you are going to spend money, you spend money to save money. You do things like paying off bonds. You do things that, in the end, will end up putting us in a better financial position and make us the envy that we are of the areas, the towns around the area, when they look at financial positions. There's a lot of people, a lot of places that would love to be Milford. So, thank you very much.
Just reminder, where we conduct our meeting, any voter, any registered voter in the Town of Milford has the opportunity to speak on any of the articles that are presented. I'd ask you to raise your hand, stand up, raise your hand, and yell, "Mr. Moderator", and hopefully I won't ignore you and I'll recognize you. I'll try to recognize each person once before I recognize a person a second time. Even if you're not a Town Meeting Member but you're a registered voter, you can address the meeting on any of the articles in the same way by... Again, it's quite far out there, the people in the... That are not Town Meeting Members that are sitting up in the back if you wish to speak. If you are not a registered voter in the Town of Milford, you need...
If you are going to spend money, you spend money to save money. You do things like paying off bonds, you do things that, in the end, will end up putting us in a better financial position, and make us the envy that we are of the area, the towns around the area, when they look at financial positions. There's a lot of people, a lot of places that would love to be Milford. So, thank you very much.
Just reminder, where we conduct our meeting, any voter, any registered voter in the town of Milford has the opportunity to speak on any of the articles that are presented. I'd ask you to raise your hand, stand up, raise your hand, and yell, "Mr. Moderator", and hopefully, I won't ignore you, and I'll recognize you. I'll try to recognize each person once before I recognize a person a second time. Even if you're not a town meeting member, but you're a registered voter, you can address the meeting on any of the articles, in the same way by, again, it's quite far out there, the people in the, that are not town meeting members that are sitting up in the back if you wish to speak. If you are not a registered voter in the town of Milford, you need unanimous consent of the representative of town meeting in order to address the meeting. Okay, what is the pleasure of the meeting? Article one?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kinnke, Selectman Kinnke.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 28,000 dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen in order to replace the sprinkler pipes in the attic of the Milford Town Hall.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 28,000 dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen in order to replace the sprinkler pipes in the attic at the Milford Town Hall. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The Board of Selectmen has provided me with a report indicating their recommendations, they're recommending favorable action unanimously. Mr. Kinnke.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this article seeks 28,000 dollars to replace about 220 feet of sprinkler main pipe in the Town Hall attic. Inspection of these sprinklers revealed leaks in this pipe. We have repaired them in the past, but now they need to be replaced with galvanized steel. This project also includes all fittings, pipe, and hangers. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of the fourth paragraph of Section 111F of Chapter 41 of the General Laws pursuant to which the town shall establish a special injury leave indemnity fund from which, among other things, payment may be made for medical bills and other expenses incurred resulting from injuries to police officers or firefighters. And further, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 250,000 dollars, said sum to be deposited to such account to be utilized for purposes of paying expenses incurred under GL Chapter 41, Section 100 and/or 111F.
Motion made in second, the town vote to accept the provisions of the fourth paragraph of Section 111F of Chapter 41 of the General Laws pursuant to which the town shall establish a special injury leave indemnity fund from which, among other things, payments may be made for medical bills and other expenses incurred resulting from injuries to police officers or firefighters. And further, that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 250,000 dollars, said sum to be deposited to such account to be utilized for purposes of paying expenses incurred under General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 100 and/or 111F. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The Board of Selectmen unanimously supports this article also. Brian?
Ladies and gentlemen, you heard the chairman of the FinCom reference this article. Essentially, what's going to be happening is it's setting up a revolving account for this injured-on-leave situation for when police officers and firefighters need their medicals and other expenses paid. It depends on the usage. Hopefully, we won't have to spend anything, but if we do, the funds will be there, and it can always be replaced. Sometimes, the injuries occur when third parties are responsible. For example, a police officer might get hit in a motor vehicle accident. In that situation, the town would pursue damages against the vehicle that struck the police officer's cruiser. Any money received from that would be what's called a third-party recovery. That payment could go into this account as well, not the general fund. The nice thing about this, as it is a segregated account, it takes out the uncertainty for budgeting purposes for your overall operating budget.
Is any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article three. Chris?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 4,000 dollars to be utilized for the purpose of hiring a consultant to conduct actuarial evaluations per GASB Statement 75/74 Accounting and Financial Reporting Requirements.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 4,000 dollars to be utilized for the purpose of hiring a consultant to conduct actuarial evaluations per G A S B Statement 74/75 Accounting and Financial Reporting Requirements. Finance committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Chris?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Per GASB 74/75 and state regulations, actuarial evaluations for our OPEB audit are to be conducted for every two years. This refers to our other post-employment benefits, which are benefits that are promised to our retirees. This money will be used to hire a consultant to perform these evaluations. I ask for your support on your article. Thanks.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article four.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 90,000 dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for consulting services to complete 75% engineering design drawings, plans, and specifications associated with the Route 16 Main Street rebuilding project from Water Street to Hope Dale Town Line.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 90,000 dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for consulting services to complete 75% engineering design drawings, plans, and specifications associated with Route 16 Main Street rebuilding project from Water Street to the Hope Dale Town Line. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any other voter here to be heard? Scott?
Thank you. Town meeting members, this project involves resurfacing Route 16 from Water Street to the Hope Dale Town Line, a distance of a half mile. The project also includes sidewalk reconstruction, handicap accessibility, and related work, improvements to the intersection of Route 16 and Route 140, including upgraded signals and roadway widening. The project has been determined to be held with a MAST DOT for federal aid highway funding and is slated to start 2019. The total estimated cost of the project is 2.4 to 3 million dollars. If approved, the funding will be used to complete 75% of the design and the engineering. I ask for your approval.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article five. Selectman Murray.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 30,000 dollars, said sum to be utilized to repair or replace the heating system at the Milford Youth Center.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 30,000 dollars, said sum to be utilized to repair or replace the heating system at the Milford Youth Center. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Attorney Murray?
Ladies and gentlemen, when we started the project at the old armory, the Milford Youth Center, the recommendation initially came in from the architects and the engineers to replace the heating system in its entirety. Unfortunately, it would have added at least a half a million dollars plus to the project, and at the same time, we were told that the boiler still had a life expectancy of about 10 years. The committee, in an attempt to try to keep that initial cost down, elected to not replace the heating system, but rather go forward with the existing boiler that we have, and repair the steam piping system throughout the building as needed. We are about, I think, probably 95, maybe 98% of the way there. The repair to the heating system took a large amount of the contingency budget for the project. There was just recently some work done on the heating system, which we think is pretty much going to take care of the problem, but unfortunately, the way the system is, it needs to run for a prolonged period of time to see whether or not the water and the steam are doing what they're supposed to do in the system. We haven't had that opportunity in the month of October to do that. If there are subsequent repairs that need to be done to finalize this, we think that this amount would handle that. So I'd ask for your support in this article.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article six.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of 1,100,000 dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be expended under the jurisdiction of the fire chief, for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new custom-built aerial ladder to replace the current 1996 model, and further, to see how said sum shall be raised, whether from the current tax levy, by borrowing, by transfer from available funds, or otherwise.
Motion made in second, the town vote to transfer the sum of 1,100,000 dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be expended under the jurisdiction of the fire chief, for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new custom-built aerial ladder to replace the current 1996 model, and further, to see how said sum shall be raised, whether from the current tax levy, by borrowing, by transfer, from available funds, or otherwise. Okay. The motion has been made to strike everything after the word "model". Any voter here to be heard on the amendment to the motion? If not, question comes upon the amendment to the motion. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The amendment is carried. We now are discussing the motion, which is that the town vote to transfer the sum of 1,100,000 dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be expended under the jurisdiction of the fire chief, for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new custom-built aerial ladder to replace the current 1996 model. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter here to be heard? Mr. Nelson. Mr. Nelson first.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the current ladder truck is 20 years old, and the replacement has been part of our capital plan for some time. The proposed truck will have more capability and versatility. Sorry. The proposed truck will have more capability and versatility than the current truck, and we hope for your support of this article.
Any other voter here to be heard? Yes, Mr. Viscanti. When you're approaching the podium, if I don't recognize your name, please identify yourself and your address, please, so that everybody else knows who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Viscanti, town meeting member from Precinct 8. I am not here to oppose this article. However, what I would like to know, is there any value to the current ladder truck? Are we selling that off as a second-hand truck? Is that included in the 1.1 million? Is there any salvage value to it? It would be nice to know. Are we going to keep that truck and continue to maintain it at a cost to the taxpayers? Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard?
Town meeting members, we did explore a few different avenues with the current truck. Unfortunately, there's a scrap value of approximately 7,600 dollars at 13 cents a pound, which is pretty insignificant. As far as a trade-in value, the dealer that we're working with right now basically says, your truck's the wrong color, it doesn't have a pump, it's 20 years old, it's really not worth anything trade-in wise. We could put it on consignment. A lot of trucks die on consignment. So at this point, we're probably not going to get much for a trade. I don't think we'll have much success selling it outright. So it's just, it's an unfortunate situation. We're not looking at keeping this truck and maintaining it as a reserve piece. We're just going to go with your approval with a new truck. We won't have a second ladder truck.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 25,000 dollars to be expended under the direction of the chief of police for the replacement of computers and related equipment and software at the Milford Police Department.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 25,000 dollars to be expended under the direction of the chief of police for the replacement of computers and related equipment and software at the Milford Police Department. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter here to be heard, chief?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the fourth and final year of this funding, and this is the replacement of the computers both at the police department, fire department, well, thirdly, the joint communication center, which is at the police department. So all of our computers speak to each other, and it's to replace that whole network as far as hardware, upgrading software, so that the added capabilities of both the fire software and the police software could be utilized.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that, excuse me, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 30,000 dollars to be utilized to purchase a new commercial tractor, lawnmower, for the collection system to replace a 12-year-old tractor that we have now.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 30,000 dollars to be utilized to purchase a new commercial tractor lawnmower with collection system to replace a 12-year-old tractor. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Rakuti.
Mr. Moderator? Yes, this is, this new tractor will address the need to replace a gas-powered 12-year-old mower that has reached its shelf life, and this is going to be a diesel-powered tractor with many attachments that we're going to need to do the trail and other areas around town that the park department maintains.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article nine.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, authorizing the establishment in the treasury of a separate revenue account to be known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, into which shall be deposited funds received in connection with franchise agreements between cable television operators and the town of Milford, and provided further, funds in such account shall only be appropriated for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreements.
Motion made in second, the town vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, authorizing the establishment in the treasury of a separate revenue account to be known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, into which shall be deposited funds received in connection with franchise agreements between cable television operators and the town of Milford, and provided further, funds in such account shall only be appropriated for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreements. Finance committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter here to be heard? Attorney Murray?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this apparently is a requirement of the Division of Local Services of the Department of Revenue, that all municipalities do this by June 30th of next year. If you have cable with either Verizon or Comcast, you'll see there's a very small little charge. I'm not sure how it's designated, government or something like that. That's a portion that comes off of all cable bills. Those funds come to the town of Milford. The agreement that we have with the nonprofit company that films this meeting and does all of the public broadcast- all of the public broadcasts, and they do a wonderful job here in the community, the lion's share of those funds go directly to the Milford Cable Company to fund their operations. There's a small portion of those funds that actually get deposited with the town, which I think held for capital revenue requests for the cable company. This requirement establishes a special account for those funds to be held, and also, it will require a majority vote of this body if there are going to be any expenditures from that fund.
Any other vote can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 10. Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford School Committee, for the purpose of bringing the Stacy Middle School interior fire doors up to the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Safety Code, CMR 1.00, Chapter 12.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford School Committee for the purpose of bringing the Stacy Middle School interior fire doors up to the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Safety Code, 527 CMR 1.00, Chapter 12. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Walsh.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you heard Mr. Moore make reference to earlier this evening, this is necessary. The fire doors that are in the school right now do not meet code. They need to be brought up to code, and that's why we're bringing this article to the town meeting right now.
Any other vote can be heard? Yes, Mr. Viscanti.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Viscanti, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 8. I do support this article, however, I do have one concern. There was a proposal solicited from the New England School Services, and they submitted a quote to complete all the work required for these, to correct all the fire doors at the Stacy School. A chunk of the money in their proposal was to replace missing doors. I'm wondering where the missing doors are. How did they become missing? Did somebody steal those doors? Was the Police Department notified? At the risk of being sarcastic, I've lived in several homes over the last 40 years, haven't lost a door yet. So can somebody please tell us why those doors went missing? How did they go missing? What was the result of the police investigation, if there was one? Did the kids come up and walk out with their, in their backpacks? Please, can somebody please tell us why we're paying for missing doors? And, further, is this a, going to be a chronic problem where every few years, we're paying for doors that go missing in our schools? Thank you.
Any other vote can be heard? Mr. Walsh.
To speak to Mr. Viscanti's remarks, the funds that we're asking for are to replace all the doors in the school. So if there are doors there that are missing, I apologize, I was unaware of that. Maybe Rob Quinn should have been here this evening to answer that. But the funds that we're seeking are to replace all the fire doors and get the school up to code.
Any other vote can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 11. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of installing a commercial-grade air conditioning system in the Milford Town Library IT Server Closet.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of installing a commercial-grade air conditioning system in the Milford Town Library IT Server Closet. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any other vote can be heard? Yes.
Jennifer DiMaggio, Precinct 1, Library Board of Trustees. Currently, the IT room is overheating and unsecure, so the funds are going to be used to potentially add an isolated air conditioning unit to lower the temperature. We've agreed with the FinCom to do some testing outside of the air conditioner prior to spending any money, and if those solutions do work, we will not spend the money. So we kindly support, ask for your support.
Any other vote can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 12. Mr. Rockwood.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the gift of land, 8 Park Terrace, shown on the Assessor Sheet 48 as Lot 269, consisting of .142 acres and currently owned by the Milford National Bank and Trust Company.
Motion made in second of the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a gift of land at 8 Park Terrace, shown on Assessor Sheet 48 as Lot 269, and consisting of .142 acres and currently owned by the Milford National Bank and Trust Company. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Rockwood.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Members, the Chief of Police has worked long and hard with the bank on this very generous donation. The article seeks to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept this gift at 8 Park Terrace, which is currently owned by the Milford National Bank and Trust Company. This land can then be, continued to be utilized by the Police Department for parking of their vehicles, and we would like to express our thanks and representatives of the bank for this very generous donation. I urge your support. Thank you.
Any other vote can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 13. Article 13, motion to pass over Article 13. This is an attempt to take no action on the article that was inserted in the warrant. The motion is debatable. Does any vote can be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Article 13 is passed over. Article 14. Mr. Moderator. Mr. Rockwood.
Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to discontinue a portion of Orin Slip, consisting of 3,361 square feet, as a public way, as shown on the plans entitled Discontinuance Plan of Orin Slip in Milford, Massachusetts. Owner: Inhabitants of the Town of Milford. Scale: 20 feet 2 inch. Date: March 6, 2016 by Gary Aaron Howland, Inc., a copy of which plan is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk.
Motion made in second of the town vote to discontinue a portion of Orin Slip, consisting of 3,361 square feet, as a public way, as shown on the plans entitled Discontinuance Plan of Orin Slip in Milford, Mass. Owner: Inhabitants of the Town of Milford. Scale: 20 feet 2 inches. Date: March 6, 2016 by Gary Aaron Howland, Inc., a copy of which plan is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Refer to sponsor. Sponsor being the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Members, this article seeks to discontinue a portion of Orin Slip at the request of Milford Regional Medical Center, due to the critical immediate need for additional parking. The Medical Center is proposing further expansion of their parking lot to the east, and that necessitates the discontinuance, excuse me, of 183-foot segment of the 20-foot wide street. The Medical Center now owns all abutting properties on both sides of this segment of the street. The parking expansion plan includes the use of this segment of the street as a parking lot drive aisle. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Any other vote can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 15. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1 million to be applied to the Milford Contributory Retirement System Personal Services Account 911-5110 to reduce the unfunded pension liability of the system.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1 million to be applied to the Milford Contributory Retirement System Personal Services Account 911-5110 to reduce the unfunded pension liability of the system. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Trudy Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I won't belabor this, ladies and gentlemen, because you had a very good presentation from the Chairman of the Finance Committee on this. This is a very important concept that the Town of Milford is going to take advantage of with your affirmative vote, to protect us in the future in terms of funding a good portion of our unfunded liability, and we appreciate your support.
Any other vote can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 16. Mr. Rockwood. Mr. Rockwood. Mr. Rockwood.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $28,000 to be expended to establish and/or maintain a regional substance abuse outreach program in the greater Milford area.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $28,000 to be expended to establish and/or maintain a regional substance abuse outreach program in the greater Milford area. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Rockwood. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Town Meeting Members, this article seeks some $28,000 to establish and/or maintain a regional substance abuse outreach program in the greater Milford area. This program will be administered through the Police Chief. The number of overdoses in Milford is on a pace to almost double from that of last year, while the number of overdose deaths have already more than tripled from last year. This is an issue that has touched each and every one of us in some way. It's being addressed at the federal level, it's being addressed at the state level, and we're talking about it here locally because it's having such a great impact on our community and surrounding communities. The intent of this program is to encourage the victims to seek help by entering treatment programs. We'll be striving to make this a regional effort and be asking neighboring towns to join us and in this program and contribute financially on a per capita basis. The number we arrived at at 28,000 is just simply based on simple math, allowing $1 per person in each of the communities, having it rated such that smaller communities can also participate in this regional program as well. Through a community approach, we can begin the efforts to combat and defeat this devastating social program. Thank you very much. I'd urge your support.
Any other vote can be heard? Chief Lawful.
Ladies and gentlemen, the opioid crisis is impacting local communities nationwide throughout this Commonwealth, and Milford is no exception. This crisis crosses all ages, genders, socioeconomic classification, and it's having dramatic, painful, and adverse impact upon families throughout this community and the greater Milford area. Mr. Buckley spoke about some of the statistics. In 2014, in Milford, we experienced 25 overdoses and one death. In 2015, it rose to 44 overdoses and four deaths. Our neighboring communities that border Milford had nine deaths in each of those years. To date, in Milford, we've had 65 overdoses and 13 deaths. The range of age is from teenagers on up through adulthood. Just today, the Massachusetts Attorney General reported that the number of opiate-related deaths in Massachusetts from 2000 to 2015 increased by 350 percent. The Milford Police Department has been and continues to be actively engaged in drug enforcement efforts against those individuals who are selling drugs in the Milford community. These drug enforcement efforts include Milford Police Detectives, a drug task force comprised of DEA agents, state police, and Milford detectives working out of Milford Police Headquarters. We also belong to the Blackstone Valley Drug Task Force, which goes from here out to the 146 area. Since December of 2014, the DEA Task Force in Milford has executed search warrants in Milford, Dillingham, Blackstone, Boston, Framingham, Franklin, Hopkinton, Lawrence, Lester, Lowell, Medway, Mendon, Northbridge, Worcester, Rantham, and in Rhode Island, Central Falls, Pawtucket, Providence, and Winsocket. Our detectives are going to go where the drug dealers are coming from, if they're bringing drugs here to Milford. These efforts have resulted in 50 arrests, 33 of whom were charged as being upper-level drug traffickers who were distributing drugs here in Milford. We have seized 1,500 grams of heroin, 1,000 grams of fentanyl, 10,250 grams of cocaine, and 424 opioid pills. In addition to these enforcement efforts, that's one of our responsibilities, we're also involved in a number of preventative efforts. We have Narcan in every police vehicle, every fire vehicle, and the ambulances. Many of those overdoses that I spoke about would have been deaths, two in fact just this past weekend, in which police officers administered Narcan. We have detectives responding to every overdose. We notify Community Impact, Amy Leoni, to have her come out with detectives, to have a face-to-face with someone that overdoses, to try to get them into treatment. We have drug take-back days, just the other day at the senior center, people brought to us 51 pounds of prescription drugs that they no longer wanted. We have a vault that CVS donated to us, it's in the lobby of the police station, we're taking 100 pounds plus a month through that vault to be destroyed properly. These funds that we're asking for tonight, as Mr. Buckley said, is $1 per capita, $1 based on our population, for each person in our community. That's what we're asking you to spend. $1 to save your neighbor's life, $1 to save the life of someone that you care about. This funding will assist us in having those treatment specialists come out with detectives to meet the people face-to-face. You have to get them at the time of crisis. You have to get them at that moment when they know they need help. You can't wait until the next morning. They're not going to come back to you until they face that crisis again. And that's what we're trying to do in every single overdose. Additionally, these same specialists will go out and ride with detectives, will found great experience in simply having detectives and these counselors approach people that we know are addicted, and offering them help, and giving them information on how to get hold of us. We've plugged a number of people into treatment, and will continue to do that. We have great resources here through Amy Leoni from Community Impact, Spectrum Health Services, phenomenal partner in helping us get people into treatment. And then lastly, which is probably the most obvious, the hospital. The doctors and staff at the emergency room are fantastic, and really have made a huge difference in people's lives. I would urge your support. Thank you.
Any other vote can be heard? If not, the que, are you ready? Yes. You got to speak, and Mr. Moderator, I didn't hear that. Mr. Wheelock, is it?
Jamie Wheelock.
Yes, right, I recognize you.
It's Jamie Wheelock, and holy smokes, the opium, the overdose death thing that's going on right now is amazing. I can commend the current efforts that have been put into dealing with it, and I'm not sure beyond the symbolism of what this project proposes, we are going to drastically affect the overdose death situation. There is nobody entering into addiction right now who is unclear about the path that they're on. into addiction right now who is unclear about the path that they're on, and I'm not sure that $28,000 a year additional resources is going to have a drastic improvement on the situation. The police chief just said the force is doing amazing work, the hospital is doing great work, and other people are doing great work. I'm not opposed to positive efforts of interdiction in people's addiction problems, but I think the town could continue on its current status of what it's doing. I'm going to vote against it. Thanks.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Bissler? Russell?
Russell Bissler, Precinct 3. I appreciate all the efforts of the police, the fire, the hospital and such, but I'm confused as to what we're paying $28,000 for regionally. The police chief mentioned we're paying for specialists to go out to get to these people right away. Is that all we're paying for with the $28,000 in addition to working with the other towns? I'm just confused as to how we're going to spend the money. I know it's a dollar per person in town along with the other towns. I just need more information about how it's going to be spent.
Any other vote to be heard? Selectman Buckley.
That's a good question. Basically, it talks about the interdiction and the real-time counseling that we can provide that the chief mentioned. So in order to have these people available at our beck and call, as you can well imagine, it isn't always at the 9 to 5 hours where we need these counseling services. These counseling services come out with the police department and intervene as the person's in crisis, either in the hospital or at their home, or wherever the police department might take them or that an individual exists. And then the other point I wanted to address, I hope that answers your question, and the only other point I wanted to address was a comment from a previous speaker that talked about people knowing full well the path they're on when they get into addiction. That's not always the case. There are a great many people who simply follow the advice of their doctors. There are young people who were involved in sports injuries. There are young people who simply get their wisdom teeth out. There are a lot of people who simply follow the advice of their doctors or dentists, and the next path they're on is addiction. So it's not always as clear-cut as one might imagine. So I just wanted to also address that point. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article 17.
Ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw related to employee parking in required yards as noted hereafter by deleting the footnote designation D as it is used within the table of Section 2.5 Intensive Use Schedule. And in addition, by deleting the footnote D under Section 2.5 Intensive Use Schedule, the words "No Employee Parking" to be located within the required yard area and inserting in place thereof the following reserved for future use.
Motion made and second the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw relating to employee parking in required yards as noted here and after by deleting the footnote designation D as it is used within the table in Section 2.5 Intensive Use Schedule, and in addition by deleting from footnote D under Section 2.5 Intensive Use Schedule the words "No Employee Parking" to be located within required yard area and inserting in place thereof the following parentheses "D reserved for future use." Mr. Cannelly.
Thank you. Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the planning board conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing on October 4th, 2016 regarding the subject of Article 17, at which time it voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article 17 is an application by the planning board to amend Section 2.5 Intensive Use Schedule of the zoning bylaw to allow employee parking in required yards. The planning board recommends the adoption of Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Essentially-- Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Essentially, the planning board is proposing this amendment to allow for employee parking to be located in required yards. No employee parking has always been allowed in these areas. The ownership of a vehicle by an employee should be irrelevant to the placement of the parking lot. The planning board urges your adoption of Article 17 as printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Is there any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, which is an amendment to the zoning bylaw. It requires a two-thirds vote. Since no one has spoken in opposition, I'll ask for a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion as presented manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 18. Yes, Mr. Carroll.
Dennis Carroll, Chair of Personnel Board. I move that the town vote to amend its vote under Article 2 of the May 23, 2016 Annual Town Meeting by changing the rate for the Clerk Board of Health to $2,946 annually.
Motion made and second the town vote to amend its vote under Article 2 of the May 23, 2016 Annual Town Meeting by changing the rate for the Clerk Board of Health to $2,946 annually. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard? Mr. Carroll?
This is simply a correction of an error that was made in Article 2 this past town meeting.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 19, Mr. Carroll.
I move that the town vote to amend its vote under Article 2 of the May 23, 2016 Annual Town Meeting by inserting therein the following positions and hourly rates of pay: dental health specialist, $17.46 an hour; mosquito spray applicator, $16.84 an hour; and youth commission seasonal camp counselor, $9.89 an hour.
Motion made and second the town vote to amend its vote under Article 2 of the May 23, 2016 Annual Town Meeting by inserting therein the following positions and hourly rates of pay: dental health specialist, $17.46 per hour; mosquito spray applicator, $16.84 per hour; youth commission seasonal camp counselor, $9.89 per hour. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard? Mr. Carroll?
Again, this is a correction to Article 2 from our May town meeting.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 20. Mr. Chris Foley.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the highway surveyor for the purpose of Milford Storm Water Permit Compliance.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the highway surveyor for the purpose of Milford's Storm Water Permit Compliance. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Chris Foley.
Thank you. Town meeting members, the need for this article is for the continued implementation of EPA's ongoing MS4 Storm Water Management Program. The funds will be spent, will be used for public outreach consultant fees for 2016 storm water report. Therefore, I would urge favorable support on this article.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 21. Selectman Murray.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $9,000, said sum to be utilized to install updated cloud-based permitting and department management software, including training, to be utilized in the Department of Inspections.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $9,000, said sum to be utilized to install updated cloud-based permitting and department management software, including training, to be utilized in the Department of Inspection. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Trudy Murray.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a request for a software upgrade in the building department. Apparently, the existing system is no longer being upgraded with limited support. This upgrade will allow for greater functionality and security with a fully integrated GIS module and a fully functional mobile application, allowing all stored documents to be fully accessible from the field.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 22. Town Councilman Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw relating to wholesaling uses as noted here and after by amending Section 2.3 Use Regulation Schedule of the zoning bylaw as follows.
Motion made and second that we waive the reading of the remainder of the article motion, if it's exactly as appears in the warrant that all the town meeting members have. Yes, it is. Any vote to be heard in the motion to waive the reading? If not, the question comes upon the motion to waive the reading. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Question-- any vote to be heard? Yes. Mr. Cannelly, you are part of the planning board. I'm sorry.
Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing on October 4th, 2016 regarding the subject of Article 22, at which time it voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article 22 is an application by the Gutierrez Company to amend the zoning bylaws related to allowing wholesale uses by special permit within BP Business Park zoning districts. The planning board recommends the adoption of Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
Is there any other vote to be heard? Trudy Pettenari?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Moderator, I'm Ernie Pettenari. I'm a lawyer here in Milford. I've been before you with regard to this property several times over the last 15 years. In 2002, this property was the first property to be zoned into the then-new Business Park Zoning District. The property consists of about 82 acres of land. It's situated in the vicinity of Route 85 and Deer Street, which is down off of 495, and this property is owned by the Gutierrez Companies of Burlington, who are my clients. In the last 12 years or so, Gutierrez has worked tirelessly to get the property approved, has a current subdivision approval from the town of Milford, and has all the necessary state approvals to market the property for use as an office park. During that period of time, the business models have changed. What's happening now is folks are not looking for large, 100,000-square-foot-plus buildings to house operations in, and instead, people are looking at smaller, more localized kinds of uses. Several months ago, Gutierrez was approached by a company called Restaurant Depot. Restaurant Depot is a national corporation. They're located in 35 states. They have many, many offices, and they are, as far as anyone can tell, a very responsible, contributing member of all the communities they're in. Restaurant Depot would like to be a tenant of Gutierrez, but they can't right now because the zoning would prohibit them coming in to use the property for their wholesaling operation. We have met over the last several months with Larry Duncan, with the town engineer, with the planning board on repeated occasions. We met with the finance committee, and in what I think is a testimonial to the merits of this article, for the first time in my practice, the finance committee actually is prepared this evening to tell you that they would recommend favorable action on this article. The reasons for that are relatively simple. Right now, that property in its raw state is valued at about $4 million a year. It's bringing in about $75,000 a year in taxes. Restaurant Depot proposes to come into Milford and put in almost $15 million in improvements to build their building in the town of Milford, contributing a $15 million asset to the tax base. Additionally, as part of the approvals that Gutierrez has undergone during the last 12 years, both state and local, there's an obligation on the part of Gutierrez to improve the infrastructure in the Route 85, 495 area, and that's going to result in another $3.5 million of improvements being made. So the net-net improvements just by this zoning change would be $18 million to the good side. The Restaurant Depot would employ approximately 80 full and part-time employees, and there would be a commitment that they would be looking for to fill those jobs from Milford folks. The aspects of this proposal, then, from the financial point of view, from the planning point of view, and from the overall development point of view of the town, we believe are healthy. The actual change to the zoning bylaw would only allow this use on up to 25 percent of any business park zoned property, and only upon the issuance of a special permit from the planning board. The controls for that kind of development are obvious. The benefits to the town, I would respectfully submit, are equally obvious, and I'm here tonight to ask you for your support. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Any other vote to be heard? Yes, you've got to say, Mr. Moderator. I can't-- I hear better than I see. Please.
Jamie Wheelock, Precinct 5. All the other land in Milford that's zoned commercial is suitable for Restaurant Depot to move into. This piece of land, or this zoning that was put on this land, was very carefully considered, and indeed, the business model climate has changed in a way that apparently lots of people don't want to build business park development right now. But Restaurant Depot is not being stopped from building its shop on any other acreage in town that's commercial. This is actually a little bit of a-- it doesn't-- we're doing the developer a huge favor in modifying what we had originally considered to be a well-conceived zoning plan, when in fact, Restaurant Depot could shoehorn itself in any number of other places. I'm not voting for this. Thanks.
My apologies, Mr. Wheelock. Next time, just say, Mr. Moderator, please. Okay? Thank you. All right. Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes on the motion, which is an amendment to the zoning bylaw and requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. Again, I'm not encouraging or discouraging anybody from voting their yea or nay on this, but just for purposes of moving the meeting along. All those in favor of the motion as presented manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. All those in favor, rise and remain standing until countered by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until countered by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until countered by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one reports twenty-one in favor, none opposed. Precinct two. Precinct two, fifteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct three. I'm sorry, how many in favor? Nineteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct four. Precinct four, sixteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct five. Precinct five, sixteen in favor, two opposed. Precinct six. Precinct six, eighteen in favor, zero opposed. Precinct seven. Nineteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct eight. Precinct eight, fourteen in favor, none opposed. At large? At large, thirteen in favor, none opposed. One hundred fifty-one, having voted in the affirmative, two in the negative, the necessary two-thirds has been acquired. Motion is carried. Article twenty-three. Motion made in second, we pass over Article twenty-three. Does any vote to care to be heard on the motion to pass over Article twenty-three? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article twenty-three. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Article twenty-three is passed over. Article twenty-four. Town Council, move.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million dollars, said sum to be utilized to further reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed under Article two of the February tenth, two thousand and fourteen special town meeting for construction of the Woodland Elementary School.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million dollars, said sum to be utilized to further reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed under Article two of the February tenth, two thousand and fourteen special town meeting for the construction of the Woodland Elementary School. Finance Committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Any vote to care to be heard?
Ladies and gentlemen, very briefly, because of the presentation the finance committee made, which I think all of you should have understood, this is something that's going to be very beneficial to the town in the long run by utilizing this one million dollars in this fashion to reduce that borrowing on the Woodland School, so I urge your support.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-five. Mr. Cannelli.
Ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to amend Article one point one five site plan review of the zoning bylaw by adopting the following relating to changes of use, by inserting in the second sentence of subsection one point one five point two point one thereof the words "any change of use" after the words "in addition."
Motion made in second, the town vote to amend section one point one five site plan review of the zoning bylaw by adopting the following relating to change of use, by inserting in the second sentence of subsection one point one five point two point one thereof the words "any change of use" after the words "in addition." Does the planning board have a report?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the planning board conducted a duly-posted and noticed public hearing on October fourth, twenty sixteen, regarding the subject of Article twenty-five, at which time it voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Zoning twenty-five is an application by the planning board to amend section one point one five site plan review of the zoning bylaw related to changes of use. The planning board recommends the adoption of Article twenty-five as printed in the warrant.
Is any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Cannelli.
Thank you, sir. The planning board is proposing this amendment to clarify the formalized, excuse me, informalize the longstanding practice of authorizing changes of use via site plan review. This review is essential to guard against the negative effects that can occur when higher intensity uses replace uses that otherwise fit as a space specifically as to off-street parking. Again, the planning board urges the adoption of Article twenty-five as printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Is any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, again, which is an amendment to the zoning bylaw, it requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized for potential land and/or easement acquisitions, including damages associated with the Route sixteen Main Street rebuilding project from Water Street to the Hope Dale Town Line, or take any other action in relation thereto.
I'm sorry. Okay. A motion, an amendment to the motion being that we delete the phrase "or take any other action in relation thereto." Does any vote to care to be heard in the amendment to the motion? If not, the question comes upon the amendment. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion now is that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized for potential land and/or easement acquisitions, including damages associated with the Route sixteen Main Street rebuilding project from Water Street to the Hope Dale Town Line. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Moderator.
Town meeting members, this article seeks the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to be utilized for the potential land and/or easement acquisitions, including damages associated with the Route sixteen Main Street rebuilding project. This traffic improvement project begins at the intersection of Main Street and Water Street and continues up Route one forty and slightly into the town of Hope Dale. It is on the TIP target program at three million one hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars for fiscal year nineteen for construction. The funding is through the Mass Department of Transportation. It could be moved up to fiscal year eighteen. This project is in the final piece of the Route sixteen improvement project. Construction includes reconstruction of the roadway, new curbing and pavement, new sidewalks, upgraded drainage components, as well as major upgrades to the Route sixteen and one forty intersection adjacent to the Milford Regional Medical Center. There will be a need for acquiring land along the layout to accommodate the roadway improvements. This article seeks to appropriate funds for these acquisitions. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Is any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-seven.
Town accountant Wendell Phillips. Good evening, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to increase departmental budgets as voted under Article four of the May twenty-third, twenty sixteen annual town meeting for the purpose of making funds available in line items not sufficiently funded as a result of the personnel board's salary study by transferring between accounts as follows.
A motion to waive the reading of the remainder of the article or motion, if it's exactly as appears on the back of the Finance Committee's report?
It is.
It is. Okay. Does any vote to care to be heard in the amendment to the motion? If not, the question comes upon the amendment to the motion to waive the reading. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The amendment is carried. Does any vote, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation.
In preparing the Article four for the annual town meeting, departments were instructed to budget a two percent increase in their wages. However, a new Article two structure was passed, resulting in some departments having a shortfall in their wages. This article will correct this, and I ask that you pass it.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-eight.
Ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning from Central Commercial, CA to Office Resi, excuse me, Residential OR the following eighteen parcels of property. Assessors map forty-eight, lots five seven zero, through and including lots five eighty-seven. Said parcels being located easterly of Congress Street between Exchange Streets and Fayette Streets and consisting of a total of approximately two point six acres.
Motion made in second, the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning from Central Commercial, CA to Office Residential OR the following eighteen parcels of property. Assessors map forty-eight, lots five seven zero through and including lot five eighty-seven. Said parcels being located easterly of Congress Street between Exchange Street and Fayette Street and consisting of a total of approximately two point six acres. Does the planning board have a report?
Yes. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the planning board voted, conducted, excuse me, a duly-posted and noticed public hearing on October fourth, twenty sixteen, regarding the subject of Article twenty-eight, at which time it voted unanimously to take a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article twenty-eight is an application by the planning board to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning eighteen parcels located east of Congress Street between Exchange and Fayette Streets from CA Central Commercial to OR Office Residential. The planning board recommends the adoption of Article twenty-eight as printed in the warrant. The planning board is proposing this amendment to reinforce existing uses in the area. Currently, the zoning in the area has no correlation to either existing or proposed development patterns. This area with no frontage on Main Street is characterized by multifamily dwellings, professional offices, and religious uses, so to maintain its inclusion in the CA district is questionable. By contrast, the OR Office Residential District was created precisely for these types of neighborhoods. Again, I encourage your support. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, again, which is an amendment to our zoning bylaw, it requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-nine.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ninety thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, said sum to be added to the Fire Department Personal Services Budget two zero dash five one one zero to be utilized to fund the cost items contained in a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Permanent Firefighters Association Local two one forty.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ninety thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, said sum to be added to the Fire Department Personal Services Budget twenty dash fifty-one ten to be utilized to fund the cost items contained in the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Permanent Firefighters Association Local two one four zero. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Moderator.
This article seeks to fund the cost of items contained in a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Permanent Firefighters Association Local two one forty. As we said earlier, the additional cost is ninety thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty. Highway Surveyor, Mr. Chris Foley.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of replacing truck fourteen with a new truck for plowing, sanding, hauling, salt, and materials in other road maintenance.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of replacing truck number fourteen with a new truck for plowing, sanding, hauling, salt, and materials in road maintenance. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Chris Foley.
Thank you. Town meeting members, the need for this article is for the replacement of our, of a twenty-five-year-old plow-salt truck that is in need of costly repairs, including rust, electrical, and frame repairs. It would be cost prohibitive to make these repairs at this time on a twenty-five-year-old truck. If approved, we'll be replacing the truck with a truck-trailer combination. This will be used as a plow, a sander as well, and haul materials, especially salt, with a savings of seven to ten dollars a ton to haul it ourselves. The availability, the availability of salt deliveries over the past few years has decreased, leaving us with empty shed and nowhere to treat slippery roads. This will be eliminated with the purchase of this vehicle, along with savings thousands of dollars. I ask for your support in this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Yes.
Margaret Hannigan, Precinct six. I just have a question. It was mentioned earlier that the vehicle that you had was ruined because of salt, and if this one is going to carry salt some of the time and something else, is it going to be worn out even faster, or is there, is it built with material that's going to be more resistant to salt?
Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Chris Foley.
Most of our vehicles last twenty to twenty-five years, whether they're hauling salt, sanding, plowing. We do everything, everything we can to make them last that long. This truck has no special option that makes it last longer. Mechanically, that's about as long as you get out of any truck before you're spending thousands of dollars repairing it, which is where we're at with the current truck. So the advantage of this truck is it can actually haul salt where the other trucks can't, they're too small. This is a larger vehicle designed to haul materials, so.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-three. Thirty-one. Selecting Murray.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of eighty-two thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized to replace the heating units on the ground floor of the Milford Town Hall.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of eighty-two thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized to replace the heating units on the ground floor of the Milford Town Hall. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Selecting Murray.
Ladies and gentlemen, this article seeks to replace heating units that were installed in nineteen eighty-six and well beyond their useful life.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-three. Mr. Chris Foley. I'm sorry, thirty-two. Can't wait for that one.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to raise, to raise and appropriate the sum of, the amount of three hundred thousand dollars to spend under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor to be used for Milford's share of construction costs associated with replacement of the bridge deck on Fisk Mill Road.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor to be used for Milford's share of construction costs associated with the replacement of the bridge deck on Fisk Mill Road. Finance Committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Chris Foley.
Thank you. Town meeting members, back in the spring town meeting, we asked for funding to start design engineering to repair the Fisk Mill Bridge. The design has been completed, and the construction costs have been estimated to be around five hundred thousand, which is much lower than we originally expected. The funding will be used for the town of Milford's share of the repair. The town of Upstate is sponsoring for the other half of the repairs. If approved, the construction could start as early as spring two thousand and seventeen. I ask for your vote favorable on this.
Is any other vote to care to be heard? Thank you. Mr. Wheelock. You're making progress.
Maybe the Highway Department can answer this question. During the improvements to the bridge, can the way that the bridge is measured be shortened so that it becomes more easy for state money to repair it in the future? Unrelated to Fisk Mill Bridge specifically, but are there other bridges in town that are longer than whatever the twenty-one-foot problem is? I'm just quoting from things I've read in the Milford Daily News about this bridge is not, doesn't get state aid for its building because it's slightly too big, too long. And I wonder if the bridge can be made shorter because the measurement part seems to not be about the part of the bridge that is the bridge over the creek, but has more to do with some embankments. And I'd love to know if the bridge can be turned into a correct-length bridge so that future repairs can have state money.
Any other vote again to be heard? Mr. Chris Foley. Again, as far as town meeting procedures, just to review it again, it's not a question and answer. You raise a question, hopefully somebody has an answer, all right? So that, you know, it's not an interrogation, but go ahead, Mr. Chris Foley.
All right. Well, the state does offer a small bridge program. They're offering up to five hundred thousand dollars to repair bridges, but a small bridge is a bridge that's ten to twenty feet long. This bridge is twenty-three feet. We cannot make it smaller. The repair is five hundred thousand dollars. That's a bridge deck change. To make it smaller, we'd have to change the abutments. It would be a, you know, one point five million dollar repair to make it small. So that's not even something we'd think about doing. So we don't qualify for the small bridge funding.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-three.
Ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to amend section three point, excuse me, three point eight obstruction permitted in required yards of the zoning bylaw by adopting the following new section three point eight point five thereof related to fences. Three point eight point five fence height. Fences shall not exceed eight foot in height, except that fences located within the required side and rear yards shall not exceed six feet in height, and fences located within a required front yard shall not exceed four feet in height.
Motion made and seconded. The town vote to amend section three point eight obstructions permitted in required yards of the zoning bylaw by adopting the following new section three point eight point five thereof relating to fences. Three point eight point five fence height. Fences shall not exceed eight feet in height, except that fences located within the required side and rear yard shall not exceed six feet in height, and fences located within a required front yard shall not exceed four feet in height. Does the planning board have a report?
Yes. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on October fourth, twenty sixteen regarding to the subject of Article thirty-three, at which time it voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article thirty-three is an application by the planning board to amend the zoning bylaw by adopting new section three point eight point five related to the height of fences. The planning board is proposing this amendment to clarify the allowable fence height requirements, both generally and within required yards. Currently, there is no individual section that covers all these requirements. The planning board urges your adoption of Article thirty-three as printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Does any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion. An amendment to our zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-four. Yes. Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of seven hundred and ten thousand dollars, said sum to be added to account seven one zero dash five nine zero zero debt service to be utilized for the purpose of redeeming prior to their stated dates of maturity the town's remaining school remodeling bonds originally issued on April fifteenth, two thousand six.
Motion made and seconded. The town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of seven hundred ten thousand dollars, said sum to be added to account number seven ten dash five nine zero zero debt service to be utilized for the purpose of redeeming prior to their stated dates of maturity the town's remaining school remodeling bonds originally issued on April fifteen, two thousand six. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Town Treasurer.
Ladies and gentlemen, I bring this article to you looking for support in paying off some of our outstanding debt. By paying this amount now, we will be reducing our outstanding debt as well as lowering our debt service budget for the upcoming years. The town will save approximately one hundred and sixty thousand dollars in interest by paying these bonds early. Your support will be much appreciated. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-five. Town Council Mooney.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars to be added to the town's liability claims insurance fund number eight five zero one dash four nine seven one.
Motion made and seconded. The town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars to be added to the town's liability claims insurance fund number eight five zero one dash four nine seven one. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote again to be heard? Town Council Mooney.
Ladies and gentlemen, as many of you may be aware, the town of Milford since nineteen ninety has self-funded its insurance program. We thus carry very few forms of insurance, including liability insurance. Doing this and basically paying the premiums to ourselves over the last twenty-six years has resulted in incredible degree of savings on an annual basis to the town. And over the years, we have funded even less than we originally intended for reasons of fiscal autonomy when times were tight. But I'll recognize now that even though we've funded at a very low level and lower than we should have over the years, now that times are better, the Finance Committee and the Finance Director all agree that it would be a good time to infuse this fund to make sure it's solid, so it'll continue to generate interest, to pay the claims, and thus benefit future generations. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-six. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred thousand dollars to be added to the stabilization account eight three zero zero dash four nine seven one, and additionally to transfer the sum of one million dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be added to the stabilization account eight three two five dash four nine seven one.
Motion made and seconded. The town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred thousand dollars to be added to the stabilization account number eight three zero zero dash four nine seven one, and additionally to transfer the sum of one million dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be added to the stabilization account number eight three two five dash four nine seven one. Finance committee recommendation is what?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote again to be heard? Mr. Moore.
Ladies and gentlemen, as I spoke about earlier, the stabilization fund, we are always committed to contributing to that. We've contributed to that on a consistent basis, and it's put us in a very good financial position. It aids us in our bond rating so that we get lower rates when we go for bonds, as well as to be able to fund projects for the future. So I urge your support.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to transfer a sum of two point four million dollars to the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized to offset operating capital and debt expense to fix the tax rate for the fiscal year twenty seventeen.
Motion made and seconded. The town vote to transfer the sum of two million four hundred thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized to offset operating capital and debt expenses to fix the tax rate for fiscal year two thousand seventeen. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article was cosponsored by the FinCom as well as the Board of Selectmen. As you saw in the last article, we put a great deal away for savings. In earlier articles, we also paid off debt. This article seeks to assist the tax rate, and by lowering that rate and by putting in the sum of two point four million dollars towards that tax burden, I'd urge your support. Thank you very much.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Yes. Motion made and seconded. We dissolve the warrant. Any vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the dissolution of the warrant. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Wonders, bring forth your attendance sheet. Don't forget the information sheet. If you haven't passed it to your monitor.